Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning Board meeting of February 11th, 2020. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this meeting is being brought to you by Area 58 Community TV, which when I watch it at home, is on Channel 15. All right. Tonight, the first thing on the agenda is an A&amp;R. It's Silver Street. It's map 67 lot 6A and 4F. Wayne Vaughn and Linda Stas. And tonight, it's just a receipt of plans. And nobody's had a chance to take a look at this in the Planning Department yet, so we'll take a look and vote on this at our next meeting. You have anything to say about this, Jim?
No. Haven't had a chance to review it yet.
Okay.
Get together with Bob and Kevin to review it.
Okay.
Have a report back for the next meeting.
All right. Okay, thank you, Jim. We have two public hearings that have been continued. And so the first one is the application of Clean Energy Company, Joe Shanahan. And this is for a site plan review for Zero Snap It Road. It's a solar project. And what have we heard about this, Jim?
So we spoke, I spoke with Joe Shanahan today, and we also emailed. So I asked him if he wanted to present tonight, or if he wanted to continue once. He said, "Continue." And he said, "Continue into April." So then I said, "Well, do you want that on the first date in April, April 14?" And then he called me this afternoon and said, "Yeah, April 14th is good because they still have to go to Conservation and then as well as, you know, meet with the Perrys on the project." And so that would give them the time to make changes to the engineering plans, get to the Conservation Commission, and also have a chance to meet with the Perrys in between. I did receive an email message from the Perrys today. I don't know if they want me to read that into the record or not. Sure. So what I'll do, I'll start with, so we received today, February 11th, at 10:50 a.m., "Good morning, Jim. I'm requiring about the screening for the solar project behind my house. I have received the emails about going back to Conservation and the rescheduling of the next meeting, but I have heard nothing about the screening. I asked about the height of the screening needed to screen my property for this project when we were ending our meeting. This was one of the things I asked for and have not, have yet to receive anything about this. For now, I have two concerns. First, me and I can't have a real discussion with my wife or in-laws without some idea what is being used for screening and the height of said screening. The second was about the feasibility of the screening. If it is the tall evergreens, how would they stand up and survive where they're being proposed? I know some board members had concerns about the trees being proposed who not hold up to the, would not, which would not hold up to the wind in bog conditions. I asked for this because I didn't want to waste any, everyone's, everyone's time if this was not going to work. I am having a hard time seeing this being successfully done. Looking at a map and then, and then in reality, are two different things. I was expecting some answer this week, and now the meeting is being rescheduled. I feel it is better to go through the board for these questions and not just Joe directly, meaning Joe Shanahan. They must, they must know the height already and type of screening by now. Also, maybe the new size and location of the field that they are proposing. Your help in this matter is appreciated. Thank you, Bob Perry." And he gives his contact information. Then I responded back in about 11:12. "Hi, Bob. I just left a voicemail message on your business phone. Joe Shanahan will not be presenting at the Planning Board tonight. He has asked for continuance to the April meeting, the first meeting of the month being Tuesday, April 14th. Mr. Shanahan has not spoken to me directly about his project status, but he has, has to have, have to, he has to have the plans revised by his engineering company. Before he makes final engineering plans, he should have them reviewed by you and your family and the Conservation Commission. Planning Board member Kevin Robinson is in the landscaping business, and he can comment on the viability of landscaping being proposed with the revised plans. I can ask the chairman if we can read your email into the record at tonight's meeting regarding Jim Walsh, Planning Director." That was the communication today. And then, so later on in the afternoon, I did get a call, actual phone call, from Mr. Shanahan. And so he agreed to April 14th being the date. And then later on, I realized that April 14th is also a town meeting date, so.
Well, whatever.
We'd be hard pressed to have two meetings. Not going to happen.
So, Mr. Chairman, just another point of interest for the board, and I think this is good for the applicant also. What's the date of the election?
I believe it's the 25th, did we say? Of April?
April 25th? Okay, so, the April 14th, I'm out of town. So that will impact that meeting for that applicant. I want to make him aware of that. So...
So we're thinking that the 14th is going to be town meeting anyway?
Right.
So we're not going to have, this board won't meet on that because we're going to have to be at town meeting.
So I'd recommend to the board that the next Tuesday would be the 21st. After that, it's a new election, and I'm, and I'm not running. So that would directly impact the applicant's, while I'd be up to him, if he wants, how he wants to proceed. But it'll be, it will be a new board, so I just want to make him aware of that. So I would, I would encourage that we get a message back to Mr. Shanahan that the month of March is beautiful. Time to try to get his application to a decision.
Well, he's going to probably have to wait till May.
Well, it'll be a new, he'd have to.
Reapply.
Refile and all that other stuff. I mean, the boards have done that before when we have elections, and we've just waived all the costs and everything. But he'd have to refile.
Right. Well, we wouldn't want to just throw somebody grand new into that either.
Right. So I think it would behoove him to not wait, but I don't know what his plan is. So I just want to make it aware. I just want to be out there publicly about the time restraints that are there. And this, this application has been going on for quite a while, so I just want it out there.
Do we already have our March dates?
Well, it's April, so we're talking about April right now. So our next meet, so our first meeting would be April 14th. We're not going to do that because.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. So our next regularly scheduled usually would be April 28th, but that would be after election. So if we were going to do anything, it would be, it'd have to have a meeting, a special meeting on the 21st of April. I mean, I don't know if that project is going to be ready to be voted on at that time, but I suppose we...
So the month of March is something to not even consider because, Jim, he's asked you to...
Well, what I could do because of the new circumstances, I'll contact him and see if he can have something to us by the 10th, with a decision by the 24th, if there is a decision. So that that way, you know, to say, "Look, we're going to be losing a planning board member."
Possibly two.
Possibly two. So if you want to consider refile, you know, you could go and try to do the 10th and the 24th, or you could consider just refiling your application.
And the reason why we're not considering March is because he has to meet with Conservation first?
He said he had to meet with Conservation, but I think if he, he was aware of this new condition, new, new situation, he might consider making an effort to get it in by the 10th.
So why don't we plan on extending, continuing this to our next meeting, and then if it changes, we'll have to change it then?
What's the next meeting date?
25, I think.
Go to the 25th?
20. No, 25, yeah.
February 25th?
February 25th is our next meeting.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Clean Energy Company, Joe Shanahan, to February 25th at 7 o'clock.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. And so you, yeah, then we'll, then he'll have to figure out whether he wants to do this sooner or later, or wait till after election and, and then restart the whole thing. Okay. Okay, thank you, Jim. So on the second public hearing we have tonight is on the application of Borrego Solar Systems. And this is a special permit and site plan review, and this is also for a solar facility. And this one is at, where is it?
19C Wood Street.
19C. Okay, there it is. 19C Wood Street. And that's to be continued also, Jim?
That's correct. So they, they request it to the 25th.
Okay.
So they've, in regard to that one, they've pretty well completed their meetings with the neighbors, and so they're just trying to wrap up some loose ends. And then what I'll do, I'll contact them and encourage them to get everything quickly to any final comments from Foster O'Neil. And then that way, we could, you know, try to schedule a decision if that's the board's desire for the 25th.
Okay.
On that one.
And will they be ready by the 25th?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. They, they had difficulty scheduling the meeting. I guess there were a couple of cancellations along the way, so they finally had it. And so I'll just encourage them to, you know, they, they still could come in on the 10th as well, but they're looking for the 25th, and then if there's any outstanding issues, then they can come back on the 10th.
But I guess the same thing could happen to them if they.
Right.
Extended this further into the future. So I guess they have to...
I don't think, yeah, I don't think they're there. They're, they're almost ready to go.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Borrego Solar Systems, 19C Wood Street, to February 25th at 7 o'clock.
I'll second that.
Say a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was unanimous. So the next we have is Planning Board Member Notes. Does anybody have anything to...
So I only had a couple of things, Mr. Chair. First of all, just so everybody's aware that, and I'm going to announce it again, that I will not be running for reelection. It's been a great pleasure to sit on this board and help this town through all these years, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody ahead of time because I know I'll forget. And the other thing, we just had a redevelopment authority meeting on the Route 44 project for the U R P. We have progress in place. Can't really get into any of the particulars, but there is progress. So it should be pretty encouraging within probably the next month or so on some, some action up there and stuff. So I just wanted people to be aware that there is progress still being moved on the U R P. And we also have a, we also have a piece of property that the R D A owns that is for sale on Forest Street. So anybody out there that's interested is on the central registry. It's on the town's website, out there for sale. So a lot of activity on the R D A.
Just a point of information, 90 Forest Street.
Thank you. I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Will. Planning Director Notes.
All right. In your packets, you have something with Select Board letterhead, and that is the town's harassment policy. And so they're asking all members, at the very back, there's a acknowledgement, a receipt form. And if we could get those signed and turn into the, you can give them to me tonight, or we can turn back into the permitting office during the week. But we've been requested to fill those out. The next item, so I gave you tonight, I passed out a copy of the advertisement that went into the travel reporter for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment changes, and then kind of a schedule for the public hearing. I don't think, you know, I think probably we might need the first date, and then maybe the March 10th date. But, you know, if it gets any more detailed, you know, people have a couple in-depth things that they want to change, then we could, you know, if we have the extra dates there available to do so. My next up is, I'll be, before the hearing days, I'll be mailing out kind of a cover letter explaining, you know, what the thinking was behind some of the changes, and then also the kind of strikeout kind of document so that people could see where those changes are coming from.
Okay. So we're, we're talking about, and I'm just wondering if all the board members that are here right now, because see, we, Jim isn't here tonight. So we're talking about having these meetings for the bylaw changes on Tuesday, March 3rd, at 6:00 p.m. So that would be before our regularly scheduled meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. So is everybody going to be able to, I don't know how many meetings, you know, we, we did schedule four. I don't know. It may just take a couple of meetings to, to do this, but we, so...
Is that a certain time? Oh, 6:00 p.m.?
It's going to be Tuesday. The first one's going to be Tuesday, March 3rd at 6:00 p.m. So it's going to be, we'll have an hour before our regular scheduled meeting.
We don't have a regularly scheduled on the 3rd?
Right. So the 3rd would be.
Oh, okay.
Right, special meeting the week prior.
Okay.
And then March 10th will be the regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, so that's the regular meeting.
The hour before. And then if the board determines we need to meet on the 4th or the 11th, then the board can make that determination at that time.
On the 3rd. We'll figure out, see how much progress we get done on the 3rd, whether we should continue it to March 10th or continue it to the Wednesday, March 4th. Well, okay, so the first one, we'll, we'll, we'll take that one first. Is everybody going to be able to?
March 3rd, 6 o'clock?
Yeah. Tuesday, March 3rd. You going to be able to do that? Okay.
That's the only thing that's on the agenda, right? Would be the zoning.
Yeah, just the zoning articles. You going to be able to make it, Jim?
Looks good.
Okay. All right. And then how about, let's just talk about the Tuesday, March 10th. Is, is that an hour before our regular scheduled meeting? Is that going to work with everybody? Everybody going to be able to do that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I guess those are the, the two. Okay, so we'll, we'll do that then.
Well, I'm going to suggest we meet up in the, we have our new planning conference room, so we just meet there in that room if we wanted to.
Which is the planning office?
Right, in the planning office there.
Okay. These are open to the public?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess we have a crowd, we can go upstairs.
All right.
Or down here.
Okay.
We're going to be discussing them with the public? Or possibly?
Well, it's, it's an open meeting. And if...
Yeah, generally, when we do these things, it's, it's just, you know, just the, the board members.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, we get some residents, but.
Yeah.
And Fran and Fran.
Yeah, I don't know if, yeah, will it be videotaped?
We'll have to because there's zoning articles, right?
Not sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to Jim about that, and yeah. Yeah, so if we have to move, if there's a crowd that shows up, we could probably, we could move down here or upstairs.
Upstairs.
Yeah. Okay.
The case may be. And then the next item is, we got a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level, and they're asking for the subsidized housing inventory update. So actually, we lost a couple of units. We have some units that are back when we had CDBG funds. There's roughly about a 15-year time period on those units. And so we had two units come off this year. And then there's another property where, I think it's 2022, and that will come off. And then we, but we do have a number of permanent units, permit, like Coppellantin Lane, there's four permanent units there. But kind of in relation to that, because I, we also got a call from Karen Cash. She's the new, I guess, kind of owner's representative for Lindbius Path. And so they're getting ready to market their affordable unit. And so we've had discussions before what the process is, and I found a little bit more information when I was talking to the D H C D staff about how to go about that. So we, there's a potential where we could apply for that unit to be a local initiative project under the state guidelines. And so if they follow the guidelines in selling the unit, then we could, the town would get credit in a future subsidized housing inventory listing.
Can I ask you a question, Jim?
Sure.
So I noticed that that house does not have a garage. Now, it was my understanding that the affordable house wouldn't be, it wouldn't be constructed of less quality or lacking anything, so I'm wondering why it doesn't have a garage where the other three have two-car garages. That's, you know, how I voted on it and understood that, you know, an affordable house was going to be based on the income of the person applying for it, not the building of the structure. So I don't know. Maybe it's not worth saying anything, but it just doesn't seem right that the affordable one doesn't have a garage. And it could possibly be the only one in that entire development that's not going to have one.
Right. Yeah, I was over there the other day, and I did notice no garage on that.
And I honestly thought, we talked about this, and it was made very, very clear to me that affordable meant based on the income of the owner. Maybe they might not have the same materials inside, but the structures were going to be the same. So how can that not be the same if it doesn't have a garage on it?
Right.
You know?
So in any ones that we've ever done in the past, they all, all physically look the same from the exterior of the building?
So it's all right that I ask that question?
Oh, absolutely. And that's a great point.
I don't think you, a person who can't, you know, who can't apply for that should have the same, you know, opportunity that the rest of the houses are going to have in there if we are voting on it. And they shouldn't have cut out or not put in a garage.
And actually, you'll be able to ask that question on the February 25th meeting is because Lindbius Path is going to come in, one, regarding how they're going to go about marketing the affordable unit. And then, two, there was an issue where a water drainage pipe was kind of placed in the wrong location on the, on the property. And so they wanted to come and just kind of confer with the board first to find out, you know, they have kind of a plan to kind of keep it where it is, but they wanted to, you know, before they put final plans together, talk to the board about that.
Sure.
How to handle that. So, and then in the meantime, I'm going to try to find out more information about, number one, how do we, how, how does the town get that to be designated a local initiative, you know, property? And then also about the requirements to meet the, that affordable housing objective there. So that's coming in. And then we have, up on High Street, off of High Street, we have Whistleberry Glen subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
It's currently being marketed on LoopNet, which is a commercial real estate website. And we've had a couple of calls. One is a broker is interested in purchasing it, and I kind of had a little meeting with Bruce about it, just to raise the point that they had asked a question, I think it was originally designed for single-family homes, and the individual was asking about, you know, townhouses or something similar to that on the lots within that subdivision. So I just mentioned to him that he has the opportunity to come in on the 25th as well to talk about that and have a discussion with the board.
That's a two-part subdivision, right? They go in and then they drive around, and then there's a second cul-de-sac?
Right. Well, you come in, there's two immediate cul-de-sacs, and then it goes all the way down to the very end. But then you have the conservation land, and there's a lot, kind of like an A&amp;R lot that's over on High Street.
Yeah, it's separated out.
Yeah, separated from the rest of them, so.
But Whistleberry Glen was a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, I, well, my thing is, it just, they have it set up where it almost seems to be too separate. But the fact that you mentioned that now, that makes sense that the conservation area is in the middle of that.
Yeah.
So the second one, the second one is the one where I believe there's more lots on it.
Would that be Gilbert Estates you're referring to?
Well, no, I think Whistleberry, oh, is it Gilbert Estates? I didn't even know that they finished naming it, or they even finished, they haven't even built on it.
Yeah, there's Whistleberry Glen, and that's kind of right at the end of Spring, Spring Street. And then if you take a right and kind of go down maybe half a mile or so, on the right is Gilbert Estates. They came back, I think around September-ish, because their permit had expired. They had a special permit, so they had to renew the special permit. And then they also had to do the covenant.
Okay.
And so they finished paving the road, and I'm not sure what stage you're in right now, so they put some pavement down on that one where before there was nothing. So, and I'm trying to go back and recreate the records to find out, one, are there any inclusionary units with either one of those subdivisions? And then, two, get a better handle on the open space land so that if the town wanted to make a push to accept the open space parcels, you know, for the Conservation Commission, that we could make that push. And then after that, that's it. So, yeah, the other thing was town meeting is April 14th, we already discussed that.
Thanks, Joe.
So would we be canceling our meeting then for the 14th or making it up?
See, what we're going to do is, what are we going to do? We're going to... So we were going to do...
I mean, we could all still, after last year's town meeting, it only lasted 11 and a half hours.
Yeah, so the thing is, is that you could have it the next, the following day, the 15th, but, but, but we don't know. Sometimes the, the town meeting continues for a second evening. So we could either do a regular scheduled next meeting would be the 28th. And I suppose it all depends upon what's on the agenda, you know, what, what projects we have before us. So I think we'll, we'll kind of wait and see. We have two solar projects that, that we're, we're waiting to see when the plans are going to be finished. So that's just, that's a ways off, but there definitely won't be a meeting on the, on the 14th here. I mean, we could, we could do one, depending upon the schedule, you know, what's, what's on the agenda. If we needed one, the 21st, we could do the 21st, the next Tuesday after the meeting. Or we could just do it the 28th, which would be a regularly scheduled meeting. So, but we'll have to see how many projects are before us and...
Right. So, yes, we have these two projects continuing for the, for the 25th. We also have a site plan review. There's an A&amp;R lot associated with that Spring Street and commercial subdivision. There's an A and R lot associated with that Spring Street and commercial subdivision. They're coming in for a site plan review. And as far as I know, and then we have the A and R lot. So hopefully, we can make some good progress with those.
All right. Anything else, Jim?
That is it.
Well, just to say what Jim was talking about with the, the last thing about, what was that subdivision? Whistleberry, yeah, Glen. That was the one, I think, that was when Jack Hunter was here. And the developer came and was looking to see if he could do some townhouses or, or whatever, some type of alternate housing rather than single-family residential units. And at the time, we thought that it would be better for him to do the single-family units. But I, I'm thinking about it now, I don't know if the board has, you know, we have new members here, you know, whether some townhouses there would be good. You know, just talking to Jim about this, but if everything goes well in North Carver and businesses do develop there, we, you know, we may need some, you know, housing for people that they may work in Carver. And, and maybe these would be at a more reasonable price than a single-family home. So I guess it's some, something for the board members to think about. But we'll discuss that more when the developer comes in.
Well, to extend on that, you can look at Coppellantin Lane, when that was done, that was a conservation subdivision that had, that was done very well with condo units, if you want to say it that way. So not like it hasn't happened before.
Well, like, for instance, we have the townhouses that are, that are behind the post office there, over Horizon, and I'm thinking they would be somewhat like that. Now, it's kind of funny, I, I was looking at some stuff this week, and apparently there is a Santa...
Santana Way.
What is that, in Minnesota or something? Because I, I spent the entire day looking for it and couldn't find the townhouses.
Yeah, it's somewhere off of Plymouth.
It is off of Plymouth?
It's supposed to be off of Plymouth.
All right.
Because I saw the plan today, because they're...
Because it was funny, those house, those, the townhouses there by the post office, they look exactly like what they would be, except for the ones that are being shown have two car, two-car garages. So it's off of Plymouth?
It's only got three done right now, I think.
Okay. So are we talking Plymouth on the other side of 58?
The Combe's side.
Heading to Middleborough?
Heading north on 58, take a left.
Of Plymouth.
So we are heading towards Middleborough, Capeway, Rover's, I just...
Yeah, so you're kind of...
I know we have that lot, that large lot there, that, the housing, all the...
So the Cumberland Farms, the gas station, take a left turn, was about, not more than a half mile left.
Maybe a half mile up on the left.
Is that where Mr. Silva's property is, that they've already built, they've already built?
That they're starting to build, yeah, they got three of them up.
Oh, so the picture in the paper was just a picture, a projected picture of what it's going to look like. It's not actually, that's what I thought, I was looking for and I couldn't find it. Okay.
Where's the beef?
I know, I know. Well, on the, on the map, it literally had like the Verizon location, if you were to MapQuest it. So I knew that couldn't have been right.
Just wanted to ask Jim a question. I remember, I think it was at our last meeting, we were talking about a group of people that were going to go before the selectmen to talk about the transfer of developmental...
The transfer development. I'll have to follow up, because there was some delay in getting response back by one of the members of the Select Board. But I believe they're on for the 25th. But, so that's why we're bounced out of the meeting room upstairs. So we'll be down here, Joe says we'll be down here for the, for the 25th.
For that meeting. But just for the board members, because I know there was a concern that if we're down here and the selectmen are up there and they're being presented this, this project, they are going to have more discussions about this with the community. So there'll be other times that if we can't see it that night, if we can't attend, because we're going to be down here, there'll be other opportunities to catch this.
Thought here. So they're, you know, they're coming in just doing a short presentation to the Select Board. Maybe what we can do is invite them, after they make their presentation to the Select Board, come down here and make a presentation to the entire planning board.
Oh.
And then they could just, here's an overview, this is what we're proposing to do. And then they'll, you know, won't answer questions that night, but...
We'd have to put that on our agenda, though.
We'd have to put that on the agenda.
And it was only going to be, they said they only wanted to make it like a 10 or 15-minute thing anyway.
Right.
It wasn't going to be for, you know...
Q and A or anything?
Yeah, it wasn't going to be any questions or anything.
What they really want to do is have the kind of Q and A out in the community. They just want to expose it to the public. And then, and then from there, have public sessions and then come in and file with the planning board formally, through the public hearing process. So I guess Will's going to have to miss all that fun if they do come through.
Don't get him crying.
All right, that, that sounds good. Then we won't miss a thing, then.
All right, so I'll check on that. And there was some concern about, they just wanted to have a presentation, but they're making a presentation upstairs, and it's an informal presentation here. There's concern, because it's coming back before the board in a more formal session later on. So that was the, kind of the concern.
Okay.
But if the board's okay with that, then I'll go ahead and see if we can, you know, schedule to present.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have next the minutes of January 28th, 2020.
I didn't see them in half. Well, I didn't, I didn't kind of see.
I printed them from email. I would just like one amendment, the bottom of page one, that last line, when it quotes me, it says, "In this case, it doesn't meet that." Can we change "in this case" to what you're proposing? To me, it makes it a little more specific. My reaction was to exactly what Sarah had been saying. Other than that, they looked great to me.
All right, now entertain a motion to...
Can I scan this?
Accept the minutes? Oh, oh, okay, oh, you haven't had a chance to...
See, they already took me out of the packet.
All right. Yeah, they did, yeah, they were emailed to us, so.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Say a motion and a second, those, any, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so our next meeting date is February 25th. And entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone, thank you.